Keeping time and I'll let them know that we've got a five-minute rule that I'll give a 30-second warning or something.
Before, before I go into the public comments, I'll say that. And then you probably won't read it right now.
Yeah. And you can hold up a flash card that says 30 seconds or something.
Yeah, I'll hold up my red.
Actually, it's not a bad idea.
The red folder.
It's not a bad idea.
Is there a mid-sentence or mid-thought, then you hold that up and they're like, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll stand up and turn around.
You want me to say that?
Yeah.
I'll stand up and turn around.
Yeah. Five, six o'clock.
Do a little hokey-pokey dance. Forget everybody.
Five is six. Do we go by, my phone says six.
My phone says six.
Oh, you're good then. Do we go by that one?
Always go by that one.
Thirty more seconds.
How much?
A minute and sixty. Forty-five. Do you want to count down?
I feel like I'm in school.
So I'll just go ahead and say I'll make a motion.
Oh, nice. Yeah, I have a conflict, so we'll see how it goes. September 29th. Yeah, it's a Sunday.
Twenty-nine?
Yeah. I do, so we'll have to see if I can figure it out.
As the time of six o'clock is now upon us, I will make a motion to appoint Paul Scherzil as the acting chairman as President Kimzie is not here.
Second.
Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Present. What? Oh, are we doing yes? Sorry. Jeez.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Sherjo.
Yes.
And then we also need a separate motion to...
First, call the meeting to order.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and then...
We'll do that after a roll call for Gerger.
Okay. And then with everyone who joined me in a moment of silence. Now, a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, clerk, the roll call, please.
Trustee Mann.
Present.
Trustee Charo.
Present.
Trustee Detmers.
Here.
Trustee Mao.
Here.
Trustee Sherjo.
Present. And then also can I get a motion to allow trustee Gerger, who's away on business, to join our meeting by phone?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion has been made by trustee Mao, seconded by trustee Mann. Hello, trustee Gerger?
Hello, everyone.
All in favor for the...
Do we need a, is it all in favor?
Oh, yeah, you can do that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Nays? Motion carries. All right. Moving into public announcements, I know our chief of police, Vern Foley, has a few public announcements for us.
Hey, it works tonight. All right. I just want to come from the board tonight for a couple of different things. One is I have two new officers that have started. One started yesterday, one started today. Want to introduce them and also give them the oath of office. And they'll be moving on to the Illinois State Police Academy. What will happen when they join, when they go to the Illinois State Police Academy, they're due to report on Sunday at 11:15. They will go through a 14-week program. During that 14-week program, there'll be anything from instruction to the basic knowledge of how to be a police officer, to the PT part of it, the physical side of it. They'll be tested through their knowledge and through the exercise program and such. So they will be out there for 14 weeks, hopefully with the graduation. That will set them back about December, the middle of December. In December, then they will join our department, where they will do 18 weeks through the field training process. So with 18 weeks, the 14 weeks, which it does take a while, 32 weeks, then hopefully they will be out on their own as a full-time police officer. So at this time, I want to bring Logan Muncie forward to take the oath of office. Just need your right hand. On my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
On my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution, my community, and the agency that I serve.
I will always uphold the Constitution, my agency, and the community that I serve.
Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to bring Adam Hahn up.
Right hand, sir. On my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
On my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution, my community, and the agency that I serve.
I will always uphold the Constitution, my community, and the agency that I serve.
Congratulations. It's not often that we get to do this, so it is a great thing because it's been a while since I've been able to stand up here and bring new officers to the board. And I do appreciate, obviously, the commitment that you guys have as well as committed to public safety, so it's much appreciated. Thank you. The second announcement I have is I have Jim Wolfe here. Jim Wolfe was a law enforcement liaison with the Illinois Traffic, he's part of the Illinois Traffic Safety Committee. He's retired, I believe, as a Colonel with the Illinois State Police. Well, did I? I have lost it. Captain. But he's here to speak today about, yeah, about the Illinois Traffic Safety Challenge. It's something that we participate in every year, and he'll speak to you about the award we recently received from the Illinois Traffic Safety Challenge. Thanks, Steve. Thank you. Good evening. Again, my name's Jim Wolfe. I'm a law enforcement liaison, and I'm a, I work for the Illinois Association's Chiefs of Police. I'm here tonight to recognize the Chatham Police Department and their participation in this year's Illinois Traffic Safety Challenge. Many of you may be asking, what is the Traffic Safety Challenge? It's a peer-review process that recognizes comprehension, a comprehensive traffic safety program. It expands involvement in traffic safety as a strategic priority for the agency. It reduces crashes in your jurisdiction, detects and deterses crime, creates a safer community, improves quality of life, and contributes to the state of Illinois's Strategic Highway Safety Plan. The Traffic Safety Challenge is funded by IDOT through a National Highway Transportation Safety Grant, and it partners with IDOT, the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, and then several private corporations and partnerships with AAA, the Northwestern Center for Public Safety and Laser Technologies, just to name a few. So what does the Traffic Safety Challenge do? It recognizes excellence. It recognizes creativity, commitment, and innovation to an agency's traffic safety plan. It encourages an agency to self-evaluate with their policies, their procedures, their training, and their equipment needs. It also develops, it also assists them in developing an overall comprehensive traffic safety plan. It provides a means to measure their effectiveness, and the priority areas that Chatham looks at, or any agency that participates in this program, is occupant protection, speed awareness, distracted driving, which is a huge problem across the state and nation, and impaired driving. The application review process hits six different categories. They look, it looks at the agency's policies, procedures, guidelines. It looks at the training of the officers to make sure they're up to date with like standardized build sobriety testing, their LiDAR or radar certifications, you know, and now medical or recreational cannabis is coming on board. So there may be some additional training opportunities for drug recognition experts, ARID experts out there to identify that impaired driver with regard to use of cannabis. It looks at officer incentives and recognitions. Probably a very important aspect of it is public information and education as it relates to traffic safety. It also is, and there's an enforcement component to this program, and then the, again, they also look at the effectiveness of efforts. So this year, Chatham PD placed second in the municipal 11 to 25 sworn category. They've been, I think, participating for about seven years now, right, chief? And this year is second place, and they were awarded a new Stalker II dual-band moving radar for their efforts. I'd like to recognize the leadership and commitment of Chief Vern Foley and Deputy Chief Scott Tarter. I want to acknowledge the dedication and proactive efforts of all the officers assigned to the Chatham Police Department. I'd also like to recognize Deisha Marcelia. Although she's not a sworn officer, her role in this, in the Chatham PD's traffic safety submission is critical to the success the agency has had with this program. She takes ownership and sees the value that a comprehensive traffic safety program brings to the community. She also manages the paperwork and reporting requirements of the year-long IDOT STEP grant, the traffic safety grant that Chatham PD was awarded last October. So again, I publicly want to thank Deisha for all of her hard work, so, thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Congratulations to our police department, to Deisha, our chief and deputy chief, and to the rest of our officers and dedication to that program and the safety in our village. I know that's a big issue with our town, and we appreciate it. I'd also be remiss not to say thank you and congratulations and welcome to our two new officers and good luck on your training at the State Academy. With that, we will move into the public comments on agenda topics. If Pat could bring the, and just as a reminder, this will be for anything on our agenda for the board meeting. The following will be the committee meeting, so if you, if you would like to wait until the committee meeting, Chairman Mao will address that time at the beginning of the committee meeting. First, I have Craig Hanson. Or, okay, and then Darlene. Judd. All right. Rick. Did I say that wrong?
Winterborn.
Winterborn, okay. Yeah, right into the mic. That way, the people at home, you're on candid camera. Oh, and also as a reminder, since we do have quite a few people, we ask everyone to keep their comments to five minutes. Our attorney will, will let you know when the five minutes is there.
Mine will be far less than that. I'm Rick Winterborn, W-E-N-N-E-B-O-R-G. I'm the master of Chatham Christian Church, and I'm here with my youth minister, Mark Huber. We simply wanted to make comment relative to the possible sale of recreational marijuana in the community. Just stress the fact that just because something is legal doesn't mean it's good for individuals or for communities. And I think the known negatives of the recreational use of marijuana is very well-known and far outweighs any possible financial benefit to the community. And we just seem to like to recommend that you hold the line on the sale of recreational marijuana and keep it out of our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. And then, thank you, Rick. And just as a reminder, we'll get, we're not going to get to the marijuana issue until the committee meeting. We'll finish the board meeting, but thank you. Ken Kingery.
I'm Ken Kingery, Chatham resident since 1957. I live at 47 Crestview Drive. I'm here to bring your attention and address the redevelopment issues around West Side Park with increased flooding to properties that my neighbors and myself have as a result of that. We all know from school that for every action, there is an equal and opposite reaction with grading and leveling. It has caused new heights of flooding onto my property, virtually making my properties possibly useless as a rental property from now on. I'm here to ask that the board can come up with a plan to alleviate this or to return it so we can use our properties once again. Again, that's what I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. I believe the rest of the speakers are all on the issue of marijuana. And if so, if you don't mind, I'll, once we finish the board meeting, we'll turn it over and last for those public comments at the beginning, so that's closer to when the board will be speaking to it, if that's okay with everyone. Any other public comments on our agenda for this board meeting? I'm going to try to finish this up. All right. So on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
So moved by trustee Mao. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Charo. Any discussion?
No.
Nothing? Okay. Clerk, roll call.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Sherjo.
Yes.
Noel Business, Under New Business, A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Village to Enter Into An Agreement Governing the Use of Pickleball Courts at Village Parks by the Friends of Chatham Pickleball and Accepting the Improvements of Same. I think, Pat, you talked about this at the last meeting, Dewey. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Detmers, second by trustee Mann. Any discussion?
Similar to the other sports agreements in town, CBSI and Chatham Soccer Association and others, gives the Friends of Pickleball, you know, access to the pickleball, first reservation rights to the pickleball courts. But other than that, you know, any citizen's able to use those courts whenever they want, assuming those are not formally reserved through the reserve application. So this group has committed considerable funds to make this pickleball court a reality, and every day since, they've been out there playing, so I appreciate that. And then lastly, they're, they're making strong efforts to try to teach pickleball to those that don't know how to play, so please take advantage of that group.
Including myself, and I know I've bought a paddle. Dewey, trustee Detmers is trying to drive my skill level.
I'm a natural pickleball player. Born for it.
He wishes. All right. Roll call.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Sherjo.
Yes.
Next, An Ordinance Approving a Lease Purchase Agreement With, For the Capital Lease Financing of a Digger Derrick Truck.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Mann, I have a second.
I'll second that.
Second by trustee Mao. Any discussion?
I feel like we've talked about these issues, so I'm in agreement.
The thing we were waiting for was the interest rate, but the spank was at 2.75%.
All right. Anything else? If not, roll call.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Sherjo.
Yes.
An ordinance approving the purchase of a Digger Derrick from Altec.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Detmers.
Second.
Second by trustee Charo. Anything else you want to add on this part?
Now that we have the financing in place, we can purchase the vehicle.
We're just following up. Roll call.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Sherjo.
Yes.
An ordinance approving a lease purchase agreement with, for the capital lease financing of a street sweeper. Pat? Or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by trustee Charo.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Mann.
We got the same interest rate for that loan, 2.75% with the same bank.
And this is all, we talked, we talked about this at length and during our green program.
It's where the funds will come from.
It's where the funds will come from, from that fund, right?
And just to clarify, we will be trading in the existing street sweeper as part of the trade-in, and we're buying the four-year plan to...
We would like to buy the maintenance plan. That helps in them on the repurchase agreement. If we take it to them for service and we keep it under the right mileage, then the research, the repurchase agreement goes in place, and then hopefully after four or five years, we will have another deal.
And we'll get considerably more for the one that we're considering purchasing than the one we have today. In a, if we were to trade this new one in a future state, we'll get more money. It's $100,000, according to the documentation, versus $45,000 of existing, so.
Thanks for looking at those numbers.
Always.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
Nope. This one was a lot cheaper than the dollar. I don't know if you want to go, just...
If you can ride that around town, I want to see it.
Get a $50,000 of these or something and just release them. My son gave me that, so I thought I'd bring it.
I appreciate his attention to caring for Chatham.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. Roll call.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
No.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Sherjo.
Yes.
An ordinance approving the purchase of a street sweeper from Key Equipment and Supply in a Turnkey Maintenance Agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Mao. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Charo. This is just actually buying it.
So we first talk about the financing, then secondly, we talk about actually buying it.
Anyone, any additions? Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
No.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Sherjo.
Yes.
And finally, a motion to allow President Kimzie to sign an intergovernmental agreement for animal control services.
Make that motion.
Motion by trustee Detmers.
Second.
Second by trustee Mann.
Every year, we sign an agreement with the Sangin County Animal Control. They base the fee that they charge us on the number of calls that we made through this year. That's why that fee is in there. And it actually has in the notes when you look at it on there, how many calls for different types of animals and stuff.
And those have considerably gone down, haven't they? Just with Facebook being able to share.
Well, a lot of times, our officers and dispatchers will go out of their way to try to find somebody's dog. But if somebody brings a dog here, we will try just about everything before we have to call the pound and pick it up.
This is $2,500, though, that we're spending, so those of you that own pets, please take care of them.
Or feel free to call the village if you're just missing, because we may know about it.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Sherjo.
Yes.
All right. With that, we're at the public comments on village business. If nothing now, we will, I'll say the schedule of meetings and then turn it over to Chairman Mao, and then there will be an opportunity for the public comments on the committee. The schedule of meetings, 88 Transition Plan Committee, 6:00 PM Municipal Hall, September 17th. Planning Commission, 6:00 PM Municipal Hall, September 19th. Village Board, 6:00 PM Municipal Hall, September 24th. Utility Oversight Subcommittee Meeting, Municipal Hall, 6:00 PM October 14th. Public Properties and Recreation Commission, Municipal Hall, 6:00 PM November 11th. Chatham Fire and Police Commission Meeting, November 20th. No reason for a closed session now. Motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Mann. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Detmers. Any roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Dad? I'll turn it over to Chairman Mao.
Okay. Seeing that the time has passed 6:15, I will call this meeting of the committee the hold to order.
We need a motion to make.
To make, to make me chairman.
All right. I'll make a motion to have trustee Mao serve as chairman for our village committee meeting.
Second.
We need a vote? And then a roll call?
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger. Or do we need to have him?
We need to do him after a roll call.
Trustee Mann. Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Sherjo.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, now Gerger?
Now, yeah, now a motion to allow trustee Gerger to participate.
I need a motion to allow trustee Gerger to be a part of our meeting tonight.
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Yeah.
Trustee Mann.
Present.
Trustee Charo.
Present.
This is voting on...
This is for Gerger.
This is to Brett to get in the meeting.
Hello?
Trustee Mann.
Sorry, I got cut off.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Sherjo.
Yes.
Okay.
Now we're public comments.
Now with public comments, I have a few people on the list here, starting with, it looks like Scott Kaiser.
Make the same announcement.
And before Scott, before I begin, I do want to announce the same comment that Paul Scherzil made, was that everyone does have five minutes, and you'll be notified when that five minutes is up.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman of Members, for giving me a few minutes tonight. I do, sort of off-topic, if someone could tell me how to get ahold of Friends of Pickleball, I'd love to be a member of that group, but...
We'll share that.
I need, I need the help. It's an important issue, the issue of marijuana dispensaries statewide, but I think in our community especially. It's an issue that, it's important, I think, for all of you as trustees to really get It's an important issue, the, the issue of marijuana dispensaries statewide, but I think in our community especially. It's an issue that, it's important, I think, for all of you as trustees to really get a diverse set of opinions on. So I think that's great that we're talking about it tonight, and hopefully we'll be talking about it some more in the future. I come tonight and support a ban. I just think facilities that, that are going to sell marijuana are just not a part of our community values here in Chatham. You know, one of the things we pride ourselves on is being a family-friendly community. In fact, we, for many years, I don't know if it still is, for many years, that was sort of our slogan, was where families grow. And to me, that's counter, counterintuitive to a village that would allow a marijuana dispensary to come into our town. Really throw out about three reasons briefly, I could do more, but I, I want to respect your time and everybody else. You know, the other, the other issue besides the community issue, I think we saw, and I don't know if it was the chamber, if it was the village itself that did a survey a while back and, you know, asked the members of the community what they valued most about living in Chatham, and that was one of the things, that they, they thought it was a great place to raise a family. The other, the other thing that comes up many times is the quality of our schools. Our school system is one of the best in the state and one of the best in the nation. I'd submit that that's, that marijuana being sold in the community is not, not helpful to that rating. I don't think we want to show our students from whatever age that that's a value that we would endorse as a community, as a government, and so that's another consideration, I think. One of the other, one of the last points I'll raise just quickly, you know, there are, this is an issue that's really just come to the fore in the last several months in terms of allowing, allowing this statewide. When the legislature passed this law, they also passed the ability for villages to opt out. And I think they did that to give villages the opportunity to decide, is this something we want in our own community? And so I think that puts it back on us to say, to really think about it and say, is this something, is this something we really want here? Is this who we are? I'd note that the number of municipalities have, have passed a ban recently, and not only, not just any communities, but communities I think Chatham ought to look to as aspirational peers, cities we, that are our size in many ways, that are similarly situated to metropolitan areas. I'd point to Edwardsville, a little bigger than us, but similarly situated, similarly educated population, trying to find ways to, to do economic development correctly. Marion, Illinois, just last night, town in Southern Illinois, of very similar size to ours, and looking to do some things in terms of economic development, other than bringing marijuana dispensaries, has, has also passed a ban. Naperville, Illinois, in the suburbs. So I think these, you look at the communities that have, that have passed a ban, and I think we fit right into that group. Morton, Illinois, is another one up by Peoria. I don't think we know, one of the reasons, you know, one of the things you hear in support, or at least as a reason not to oppose the sale of marijuana in the village and other places is, well, you know, people are going to get it, you might as well tax it and keep the revenue here. Well, we don't even know what that's going to be. We have no idea what the revenue is going to be. No one knows at this point. The program isn't up and running. So are we ready to say, okay, well, if it's a hundred thousand, that's good. We, a hundred thousand, that's worth it. What, is fifty thousand worth it? Is ten thousand worth it? Is a million worth it? I, I don't know. That's something you guys are going to have to decide. That's a difficult question. And what are you going to use the money for? What do we spend that on? The state has set aside a significant pot of the, of the state revenue from the tax.
That's your time.
And so I thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Les Morgan?
Got a couple of things. First one, twentieth anniversary of our Veterans Memorial will be coming up next year, so plans are starting, we're in the planning stages now of having a ceremony and, and we'll be really promoting the sale of the memorial bricks. If you haven't been on the square to see that, stop by and see that, and then we'll be putting things in the clarion throughout the coming year. The second is the marijuana thing, no. The gentleman was eloquent on a lot of the reasons why we are a great community. We don't need more crime in the community, and no.
Anita Vajal?
Thank you. I just wanted to show you a picture. This is some medical pot dispensaries. They had a parade in Buffalo Grove, and they were handing out free hats, free stickers, free things advertising marijuana to children. This is what we don't want to happen in, in our city. Then there's been a national health, health warning that just came out last week against marijuana use by teenagers and also pregnant women. And what the problem is with marijuana is, rather than use it in place of alcohol, they're using it with alcohol. So again, this is going to be a problem with the police, the brother, because you can use marijuana on-site at these dispensaries. So they would use on-site, and then they could go out and drive, they could also go out and drink. There's been a lot about vaping marijuana, and they've had one person in Illinois die. They've had so far three that have died, they have over two hundred that have been sick with these lung diseases. And first they said they didn't know where it was coming from, but in Oregon, the person that died bought the marijuana pot from a legal dispensary. So that's what we're concerned about. Another issue that we have is that a lot of communities are saying no. I just talked to an alderman today to Springfield, and they want to introduce an ordinance next week to ban marijuana sales. So you would be doing the right thing for the, the people. It will impact crime, it will impact children. They had an instance already this year in Rock Island where children were bringing marijuana to school. They brought it to the high school, and twelve of the high school students got sick. So this will be a problem, so for the sake of our community, we ask you to support the ban. Thank you.
And the last one is Frank. Frank? Okay. Geiger? Geiger?
Can you spell your name?
Kyger, K-Y-G-E-R, is that right?
I think I signed the wrong sheet, but anyway, since I get to that. I just want to echo what has already been said about the marijuana. I think you folks have studied it. I believe it's been proven out in Colorado that the revenue that they're bringing in is more offset by the law enforcement costs that's gone up. So I think that's what you're headed for if you okay the public sale, that you're going to put a larger burden on our police department, you're going to put a burden on our community, our children. So I definitely echo what has been already said, a no. Since I do have this mic, I got one other thing I would like to say if I could. We have lived in Glenwood Park for forty-seven years. We were the first house built in the Glenwood Park. That subdivision was developed around sixty-nine, seventy, somewhere in there. The water system that sheds off into Lake Springfield is, was designed for Glenwood Park, with a runoff from some field, farm field areas. Since then, we've had several subdivisions come into the surrounding area. We are now getting a runoff from streets, sump pumps, you name it, in a multitude that all the water is coming to Glenwood Park. And quite honestly, that wasn't designed for that. It can't handle that, and this last rain we had kind of proved that. So if there's anything that can be done for that problem, we'd appreciate that the village at least take a look at it, maybe in conjunction with Lake Springfield and City Water, Light and Power, to see if there is a recommended fix. I believe the Homelands Association of Glenwood Park has retained or are about to retain an engineering firm to do a survey of what can be done, but I just wanted to bring it up since we had an open mic here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to bring the consent agenda, approve the consent agenda? I'll make that motion. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
No. Discussion, there's no minutes.
Okay.
There are no minutes posted. We wrote no and table it until the next meeting.
Move to table.
We'll just skip it and table it.
We've brought a motion before, so I think we need to settle that motion.
I'll make a motion to table the consent agenda until our next meeting. For a second?
A second.
There are the minutes.
That's right there, on the screen.
I've looked at many times, Matt, they're right here, they're not posted.
Joe's showing them to you.
You read them?
Joe's showing them to you.
Did you read them?
That's not the point, Joe's showing them to you.
I've been on the site many times.
Did you go to the August thirteenth meeting?
No.
That's where the minutes would be.
Well, there's already a motion, a second, we need a vote to table.
It says, you see the minutes?
If you went to the August thirteenth meeting and looked at the minutes, it would be the minutes that you're approving.
Wouldn't it be the minutes of the prior meeting? If you go to the regular village board meeting and you go to the view agenda, and you look at the minutes, it's the minutes from the prior meeting. So it makes sense to go to, go to the committee of the whole meeting, view the agenda, the minutes are not there.
Regardless, we already have a motion to table in a second, we need a vote.
I haven't, I haven't read the minutes, so if they're posted.
I don't think it hurts anything.
Nope. It'd be, be neat.
All those in favor, tabling?
Aye.
Aye. Single old business on the agenda, new business, starting with CMT Engineering Updates.
A couple of items here, you know, first, foremost, drainage seems to be a concern on everyone's mind here recently. A week ago Sunday, received, depending on whose rain gauge you checked, between five and six inches of rain. Just for a point of reference, in that duration of time, that results in a seventy-five to eighty-year recurrence period. So statistically speaking, you can expect a rain like that once every seventy-five to eighty years. So that was quite an event. You know, for example, roadways. Roadway systems are designed for a ten-year event, so the amount of flooding that we've seen in roadways, you know, that's to be expected in a rainfall that amount. Detention facilities for newer subdivisions, you would see designed for the hundred-year event, you know, without flooding of houses and so forth. So just to put that into perspective, in terms of the rain that we had earlier in the spring, and then, you know, the significant rainfall that we had here recently that's bringing to light a lot of drainage problems around town, some of which are also being investigated, you know, just a significant event, and just trying to put a measure on that. One of the items that CMT is looking at is drainage on north of Caro's Point, in the park area there. There's a significant drainage draw in the back, behind those houses through the village-owned park property, that threatens houses, pool facilities, and so forth.
I guess we've lost Gerger.
We've lost Gerger.
Hello? All right.
All right, I'll continue. So one of the areas, we're working with the street department to improve drainage in that area and resolve some flooding issues associated with that, that location, you know, and any other drainage areas, taking direction from the village, looking into those in greater depth. Other items that we're working on currently, MFT, motor fuel tax improvements, city crews are going to be working on tarmacade and continue those activities with the patching along tarmacade to finish that off this fall. Some patching was done around, asphalt patching was done along Dewberry, but we also acknowledge that there's probably some bigger long-term fixes that need to be evaluated for future improvements in subsequent years to make that roadway that's getting more and more traffic a higher priority. Let's see, we're also looking at doing some repair work at Spruce and Gordon Drive, kind of that downhill grade there, that the pavement in that area is really starting to fall apart in that location, which is a safety concern for cars de-accelerating onto Gordon Drive, so looking at getting that repaired this fall as well. We're also working on the flushing program, water main flushing program. It's been three years, so we're circulating back around and hitting zone one again, so updating that program. And this fall, the water department will be going through section one this year, section two next year, section three the following year, and then we'll just be on a continual three-year rotation on that for improved water quality.
Jim, for everyone's benefit, could you remind everyone where section one is?
Section one is kind of the southeast portion of town, coming from the water ground storage tank all the way back into town to the elevated water tank, so kind of south of Walnut, and then kind of east from that direction.
Thank you.
So, but once again, we'll have that posted up on the village's website and locations where we'll be flushing and keeping people informed on what to expect and having some public outreach associated with that. Other than that, that's about all that's going on, so.
Could it, could we discuss briefly the, the work at Westside Park?
Yes.
Yeah, just generally, you know, being part of the Public Properties Commission, there's continued efforts to develop that park, potentially put a dog park there. Now, there was some discussion about, you know, the alterations that were made, you know, grading that land, not bringing dirt in and creating anything, but just flattening the land to get it to drain towards that creek.
Okay.
Didn't know what our thoughts are, what our advancements will be, you know, with the concern that was brought up by the resident earlier.
I was not aware of the improvements that were going on out there. Once there were some public complaints, the village asked that I go out and take a look at the activities that were going on in those locations. So went out there, took a look at the grading activities, and looked at the grading plans, both from what was originally surveyed at that location, and then the final survey, then looking at the final product. And basically, what was done in that area was the existing ground was leveled out, the baseball fields removed, fences removed, and the existing ground was simply leveled out. There was no new dirt brought in, there was no significant change in contours, there was no loss in flood volume associated with those grading activities. In fact, many of the areas that I walked around out there with the grading, you could still see the existing grass poking through where the dirt was regraded, so matching several of the existing spots throughout the regrading activities. So there was no one singular spot where, you know, feet of fill were brought in, or, you know, additional fill was brought in, everything was actually leveled out and earthwork balanced within the site itself. You know, initially, when I did see the site, I shared some of the similar concerns that, you know, residents have expressed in that area, whereas if you stand at the west end of the park and look to the east with everything open graded and, you know, raw dirt, if you will, you know, void of seed or grass, it looks literally like someone brought in three foot of dirt and just filled in the entire park. But after walking through the site with the city crews, you understand, looking at the existing contours, the proposed contours, the earthwork balance, and then also staying away from the actual floodway of the creek, you know, I was more comfortable with that site and the work that was going on at that site. Later looked into it, looking at the FEMA floodway maps, looking at the flood plane limits in those areas and areas that were, you know, anticipated flood per FEMA documents, and then also coordination with Illinois Department of Natural Resources, Office of Water Resources, personally received calls from them to clarify my opinion on the work that was done out there on behalf of the village as well. And they too were satisfied with the work that was done, that the activities that were done out there were done in a proper manner and did not pose a future risk of flooding out adjacent properties. After the Sunday rain, you know, woke up that morning, saw that we got, you know, six inches of rain that morning, jumped in my truck, and proceeded to drive around town to see where some of the flooding issues occurred. That was first on my target, and when I looked at that site, the flooding was very consistent with the FEMA floodway maps. Backyards of the properties that were discussed earlier show that flooding is expected in those backyards, but not the houses themselves, and that was indeed the case that I witnessed out there with this rainfall event. Backyards were filled with water, the park was filled with water, but that quickly subsided, went down, and did not see damages to properties, houses, as a result of floodwaters from that runoff. So there's nothing there that I see from an engineering perspective. So there's nothing there that I see from an engineering perspective that causes me alarm that what the village's actions were resulted in additional potential for flooding. Simply graded out some low points in between some of the ball diamonds, basically to provide better runoff or drainage in that area. It's still expected to flood, the park will flood, it has to flood because that maintains, you know, flood capacity, water has to go somewhere. If it's not in the park, it's somewhere downstream or somewhere upstream. So those flood volumes were maintained with the grading activities that occurred.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next topic for discussion is municipal considerations for regulating recreational marijuana.
Mr. Chairman, if I may begin, I'd like to thank all our constituents who showed up tonight to speak on this important issue. I know it's a controversial and complex issue. I know for me, my mind has gone several directions, so I had actually put some thoughts down on paper, so I wasn't meandering it all over the place. So I was going to share those with you and allow you guys the opportunity to respond with your own thoughts. With this complex issue in regards to allowing cannabis, marijuana to be sold in Chatham, I've sought to see the information on both sides of the issue. The arguments against having a ban and for allowing marijuana dispensaries in Chatham are that it is now legal in the state anyway, and we might as well benefit from the revenue. For one, with that thinking on whether or not to allow certain businesses, why do we have a cap on the number of liquor gaming licenses within our village limits? The thinking would go with each one, more revenue. What about other kinds of businesses? Indeed, this is not just a family values issue for our community, but an economic development issue. And is this the direction we want to take our economic development? Many other element communities, as pointed out by one of our constituents, have chosen not to because the state did give us that authority within this legislation. Many constituents believe that if the subordinate board allows a facility to sell marijuana within our Chatham boundaries, it would be completely contradictory to our slogan of where families grow. This would be a sharp turn in our vision for how Chatham should grow with our thriving neighborhoods and excellent schools, and how we should expand our economic development. But I understand others have discussed the possible zoning of this and categorizing it in the same category as alcohol and gaming. So why not allow another facility like this in Chatham? Fortunately for us, we just completed a comprehensive plan along with the survey of our constituents on how we should zone and grow Chatham. On the survey, to the question of each service, what would you like to see more or less of in Chatham? In the more category, farmers' markets, 91%, youth entertainment, 84%, sit-down restaurant, 90%, coffee shop, 69%, swimming pool, 73%. On the less side, bars, tavern, 67%, video gaming, a whopping 87%. Our constituents are clearly saying they want less of this kind of economic development. What will be the cost to our village and our taxpayers? While we are not fully aware of these costs, we can see how the revenue allocation in the state legislation shows where the resources may need to go. 20% allocated to preventative substance abuse programs, 25% for the recovery investor new program, and so on and so forth. So while we local towns may be able to tax up to 3%, we will be paying the cost of these problems created with a facility that will open as well. In a recent letter to the editor, it said, "Don't buy the tax revenues talking points." According to the Centennial Institute, for every dollar gained in tax revenue, Colorado spent approximately $4.50 to mitigate the effects of legalization. So this could definitely cost us more than it would make for us. In addition, there is nothing stopping the state from taking this tax-away revenue to the local towns. If we did not opt out, then we would truly be stuck with all the cost and none of the revenue. It also should be pointed out that the local towns like Chatham do not license these facilities like we do liquor licenses. The license is through the state. We can set the zoning perimeters, but the state decides whether their application is approved. There's certainly concern from, of revenue from the state that there will be not be enough, as we all know, to meet their budget projections. So they may be looking to take our revenues. And there will be consequences if we do not opt out of having a marijuana dispensary and allow zoning for one. And, and I've also looked into what the professionals from law enforcement and healthcare have said. Illinois State Medical Society is calling for a ban on claims of health benefits from cannabis. Illinois Chapter with the American Academy of Pediatrics opposed the legislation of recreational use, stating, "Even with age restrictions, any policy that leads to increased adult use of marijuana is likely to lead to increased adolescent use, despite attempts to restrict sales to underage youth." Children's hospitals are calling for the ban. In addition, the Illinois State Medical Society passed a resolution opposing the legislation for marijuana for non-medical purposes. The Illinois Society of Addiction Medicine opposed it. The Surgeon General of the United States, just here at the end of August, quote, "Sounds alarm on the risk of marijuana addiction and harm." I'm now seeing cardiovascular research that it's now five, you're now five times at risk of a heart attack within the hour of use. And then if you switch to our men and women in blue, the Illinois Sheriff's Association, the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police, we had a speaker from them earlier, both objected to the marijuana legislation, citing concerns that this will create public safety hazards and challenges for law enforcement. And also, there will be the increased cost for additional needed patrols. I ran on a platform to help bring professionalism to these meetings, to this board, and to this administration. And after speaking with so many constituents, and I'm grateful to the constituents who came tonight, who value the family-centric values of this community and the views of the health and public safety professionals, I'm going to side with our constituents' view on how Chatham should grow, and with the professionals' view on this issue, and support an outright ban of selling cannabis in Chatham. And with this, I would move that our next meeting, we approve a ban to opt out of selling recreational marijuana in Chatham.
All right, folks. Thank you.
Well said, Trustee Sherrell, I would just like to second that motion. I personally have had nothing but people call and say they don't want this in their community. And our community is known for two things, safety in school, it'll directly affect both of them. I just can't see bringing it to our community, and I, I support the, the motion.
So I'm gonna add, I'm not gonna shoot, or I'm gonna shoot for the cuff, I don't have anything written down, but I'm gonna take.
Thank you for indulging me.
I'm gonna take this on a little bit more personal level. In the early 2000s, I spent a lot of time in Denver, Colorado. I was there three to four weeks every year, if not five to six. When I went back a couple of years ago, I didn't recognize the, the place that I stayed anymore. Now, a lot of that isn't to blame for marijuana use, but it is, it was not the safe city that I left when I went back. When I went back in 2012, it was not the same, it wasn't the same. So personally, I don't want to see that here, I don't want it here, it won't be here if I have anything to say about it. Now, we, we did, we had been talking about using something along the lines of a liquor license to control the sale. And I've been thinking about that a lot. My biggest problem with that thought process is, again, me included in this, we haven't held the line on the liquor licenses either. I know that I have personally sat here and voted for at least three liquor licenses. So if we were to somehow make a marijuana license for Chatham, I don't think we'd hold the line on it. I, I, I'm as guilty for not holding the line on the alcohol licenses, which allows video gambling, which are things that I have sat here and said I don't want. But yet I've turned around and, and let it go. You know, because it's, it's outlaw and it's acceptable. So personally, I can't, I, I will support the outright ban. Because I do not think that this board will hold the line on issuing licenses. Because like I, like I've said to several of us on this board, I don't want it here, no matter which way we choose to go, I wouldn't support allowing the licenses. But then the more I've thought about it, we won't hold the line on those licenses if we have the process. So I will support the ban.
Okay, I understand everybody's concerns. I have read all about this issue, both sides. And I'd like, if possible, for us to put together a task force. Bloomington is doing the same thing. Can we have something more in-depth where we actually study this issue? And come up with some, I'd like to hear more and read more from all sides. And I think a task force is a good idea, is anyone for that?
I would be. Yeah, to look more into the issue instead of just outright banning it from the beginning.
I feel like this is too, too quick, too soon, and this is too new. And I would like there to be an expanded study on this.
I agree.
How are you gonna fund that?
Well, let's see.
Those study.
That's something that we would also have to examine, is how we're gonna put it together.
No.
Any comments, Trustee Deppers?
Yeah. Yeah. So many of you know me personally in that I, you know, have certain beliefs about alcohol and others, other substances, and, you know, I grew up around marijuana. And personally, I'm, I'm not a fan of it in any way. There is truth to the fact that this legalization issue has sort of been settled for us, meaning that we didn't really have a say in whether or not it was legal. So I think, to be truthful, I mean, this, this community will be dealing with it regardless. You know, and, and we won't have revenues to offset it, other than taxes, I'm aware of that. The folks that have reached out to me saying that they're, they wish for a dispensary to be in Chatham, there have been fewer of them than those that have been opposed to it. But the item that they brought up was, you know, hey, look, you know, I'm a medical user, and it would be beneficial to me to have a dispensary closer. And, and it may be dispensary, or maybe beneficial to others, you know, that maybe are not able-bodied and can't travel to Springfield or other places to go to the medical one, and they don't mind paying the additional tax so that they don't have to go out and drive so far. So that was one of the benefits that they shared. And again, why it's gonna be legal, or when I just make a little money off of it. And then the other items that people have said for is that it could be a good revenue source that the village needs and could use for good things. And some even suggested that we use, set aside some of those revenues for, you know, for counseling, for drug counseling, drug addiction counseling, and, and those types of things, which is kind of funny to me.
Can we please keep it down, folks?
It's funny to me because, you know, we're in, in a way, we're inviting this to occur more frequently in our village and then saying, hey, well, we'll put a couple bucks aside so that we can address that problem. Again, the folks that are against it have all reminded me, as, as did Trustee Sherrell, of the reason that I ran, which is to build Chatham up for my family and for families like mine. You know, and again, people say, oh, you big dummy, it's gonna be legal anyway, you're not gonna avoid it, get your head out of the mud. And I just kind of go back to Chick-fil-A, you know, which is when, my wife and I love Chick-fil-A. But I rarely got it. But then when Springfield got one, I'm like, oh, let's go Chick-fil-A every, every Tuesday. So I just feel like there is some truth to the fact that if you bring it closer to you, you're more likely to engage. You'll, you'll see it more often, you'll see your buddy over there, you'll see your neighbor over there. I'm like, oh, maybe it's not so bad after all, maybe I'll give it a try. And I think that that will ultimately increase the usage in our town. You know, so again, tax revenue, we don't even have any idea how much money that might be. It could be $1,000 or a million dollars. And there's, there's some belief that if we don't act quickly and we don't allow this quickly, then businessmen who may be interested in opening up a shop will just look past Chatham and will, will kind of miss out on the opportunity. If we don't, if we don't shoot now, then we're never gonna get a shot. And as a businessman, I kind of disagree with that because I think businessmen will take any opportunity available to them. And, you know, and if Chatham one day down the road allows it, then there's gonna be people here. Again, I'm rambling, I should have written my thoughts down, but I've been thinking about this a lot. So I, I think that it's important that we represent our family values, and I too would be for it.
You know, I have to agree with Trustee Charo, I do not see the immediate need to have an all-out ban right now. I think it's an issue that needs to be addressed and looked at with a task force, and looked at and said, okay, what are the favors, what are the, you know, what's against, what's for? And how can we make this issue work? You know, 100 years ago, these same reasons against were used against another item, which I know many people, more than, more than do and more than don't, have a beer, or have alcohol, or have, and so, and each one of these issues that have been addressed tonight against marijuana were used against alcohol also. And yet, we sell millions of dollars worth of alcohol daily across this country. We have several institutions in this community that sell it, and, you know, is there issues with alcohol? You bet there is. But there's gonna be issues with anything you create new, whether it be a drug, or whether it be a product, it's going to be new, it's, there's gonna be issues with it. You know, the issue was brought up, well, it's gonna be sold in our schools, it's gonna be brought in our schools. I graduated from these schools. My father graduated from these schools. My grandfather graduated from these schools. And I'll tell you, bringing it to schools will not be a new issue. And, and it's not our police department's fault, it's been, you know, and they have done things to curb that, you know, the drugs have been brought in, they've, they've done all these different things. But to say it's gonna be brought in our schools if it's legal in Chatham is, is not a good reason to be against it, because it's already there. You know, and the revenues, we don't know what that'll be. I mean, do we vote against it just because of that issue? Well, we don't know how much it's gonna raise, so we shouldn't address it, shouldn't even look at it. Ban it right away, you know, it could bring in a million dollars. But just ban it right away because we're afraid of what it could do. Bring in, we're afraid of what it doesn't bring in. I think these are things we should at least look at on an issue this big and this major, that, that could impact Chatham, good or bad, or both, for, for the rest of its years. And, you know, do I do marijuana? I don't, I've never done it. You know, we, we are adults, I think it is something that should be directed at adults. I know children use it, I know teenagers use it. But, you know, if we bring it here, that doesn't mean more teens, more kids are gonna use it. They will get it if they can, and it's sold in Chatham. Not legally, but people can buy marijuana, buy drugs in Chatham, whether we want to visit or not.
I see it as very much like alcohol, I really do. And that's why I would like to see a task force. I think that it would have the same impact as a bar. And I would just like to see a task force that shows me one way or another. I, I don't, I'm not ready to ban, I'm, I'm not ready to go hardcore against this right now, it is too now.
You guys have all had your say. It appears that four to two is in consensus preparing ordinance for a ban. Would you like that prepared for the next board meeting?
Yes.
Or would you like to have it at the committee at the whole to review it?
I would say board meeting.
Okay.
We talk a few more minutes, I think.
Sure.
Again, I, I don't mean to cut you off, Pat, I just, I just think that, you know, it's good to discuss things, right, wrong, or indifferent. And I'm an open book, and you can talk to me any time of day or night you want. But there have been many concerns that were brought forth, you know, to, to this board. And I didn't hear answers to, to all of them. You know, do, do you, those of you that are for or against it, do you want to sort of address the questions that were brought to us? And, you know, we've received emails, I know you have, because I was copied on some. And, you know, we've received emails. I know you have because I was copied on some. Is there any more discussion? Again, as far as a task force is concerned, I'm new to government and, you know, fancy names and titles and things. But I've done a ton of research on my own and I'm probably not the best researcher amongst you. And I'm sure I didn't put in the most time, but I put in a lot of time. So I don't, I don't know what questions in particular you guys might have that we may know the answers to or... There's, there's a lot of things that, you know, I, I don't know what's going to happen. I, I do think that drugs are sold in Chatham. And I do think that to be, to, to be real, those that buy them today are probably going to look to buy them the same way that they're buying them today.
Well, so-
You know, so real quick, if I may-
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I, you know, if I buy weed today for 40 bucks, I don't know the right amount, but for a certain amount, and I, and it's not taxed, and I get it from my buddy, then he's not going to tax me in a year. So my price is still going to be 40. And I apologize, but I'm a numbers guy. So why would I go to the county market and, and pay 55 or 85 or whatever? I just feel like, yes, weed's here today. Yes, weed will be here in a year from now.
I do think, and I just say on that point before I forget, that there's going to be a quality issue where it'll be regulated and then it'll be safe as well for the people who want to buy it from a store. Because there are people who do things-
Quality, you mean like it's better performing or that it's more-
I don't know. I-
More pure?
No, I think-
I'm not being smartass, by the way. Smartass.
Like, you don't, do you want to buy alcohol from somebody who made rum in their bathtub? Or would you rather go to a store and have it packaged? I think I'd rather have it packaged.
May I propose this, trustee Detmers, that there's nothing to prevent us from having a ban because if there's more to study, let's say, you know what, there's some things that are not, that aren't known. So we could have a ban on this. And trustee Charo, you could start a task force and look into how can we address this issue from a village standpoint on these drugs in the black market community? What other ways are there to address this so we have less of it in, in addressing it? Maybe there's other ways. But we don't have, you know, heroin's an issue, but I don't see the state saying, let's open heroin shops, you know?
A little different.
Well, is it, you know, I mean-
It is different. Yes, it is.
Well, the, the medical, in terms of the medical community, in terms of concerns, you know, I, you know, I grew up, you know, I, I had all the friends saying, it doesn't affect you. It's not addictive. And now, I mean, from the surgeon general to Illinois State Medical Society to the American Academy of Pediatrics, you know, I work in a healthcare, and I know another trustee does as well, you know, and, and I'm sitting in meetings recently about the, now the implications with cardiovascular disease. And so the research is coming, not like this is better for you. It's all going against. To the point that Illinois State Medical Society asked for a ban. They passed a resolution. These are the doctors of the state of Illinois asking for a ban, saying that there's any health benefits to it. So, so to that point, I would say there is nothing preventing us at this point since there, there's more to be known. And I will say, there is more to be known, that if you, you know, we could do the ban and then you could, I, I'm sure do a great job of putting together a task force to gathering that research and looking into ways of addressing that issue in the community.
Well, I guess first I'd like to see the needles where you use marijuana as you do heroin to take, number one. There is a huge difference between the two.
So I guess you'd see more revenue.
There, that's not a fair comparison.
But I do, you know, again, I believe a task force is necessary. I believe these major issues should not be, the door slammed on them as it looks like this is going to be. An all-out ban is, you know, not needed.
But, but I'm going to ask this because again, I'm new to government. But if we decide amongst this board to, to create a ban, can't we decide to unban it? Five years from now, when we come to our senses and we say, oh, that was a dumb move. We, you know, shouldn't have listened to that guy with the street sweeper calling heroin. You know, it's just-
Yeah.
I just feel like a ban is an extreme reaction to something that is relatively, I, I think equating fears cause a lot of stress. And when we're talking about, if you look at the research, the real research in the history of, of marijuana, it has not been equated to heroin.
I'm not saying the medical professionals did, but I'm saying the concerns. I'm, and, and I'm, I don't think you want to say that the Illinois State Medical Society or these cardiovascular organizations are not conducting real research.
I have seen research. I don't know. I need to look into what you're saying because I haven't seen that.
Or the surgeon general.
And I need to go and look because every trend going back 20 years has not said that about the effects of marijuana.
Also go to the Illinois Society for Addiction.
I will look at all of it. Again, I'm-
All made up of physicians.
But I've, I've gone back on, generally speaking, it's not been presented as a harmful heroin-like addictive drug. And when people talk about addiction for marijuana, it's more like you can become addicted to anything. If you, anything can be addictive. You can get addicted to shopping. You can get addicted to drinking soda.
Should we ban Chick-fil-A because of the addiction there?
You can get addicted to Chick-fil-A. There are all types of addiction. And, you know, if somebody is prone to that, then, and then there's also the gateway drug. I, I don't think that just because somebody smokes marijuana one time, that they're all of a sudden going to be an addict like craving it as they would heroin. I think that is an unfair comparison and I don't feel that way about this, this drug. And there's a lot of research backing that stance. But I will go and look.
And I can-
I would also point out, all you have to do is look at Colorado and California and most of their communities have banned it. For, for a community to allow it, you've got to be pretty desperate economically. You can look at the communities that are starting to ban it in Illinois. And the ones that we're similar to are who's banning it.
Like, as far as research goes, I've done research on things. I've done polls. And I can form that research and I can form that poll to what, to give me whatever answer I want that research and poll to give me. I took classes in college to do just that. Now, I'm not saying the research is wrong by any means. But what, what I will say is if you want a desired answer, you're going to make that desired answer happen. You want a desired poll to come out in a certain way, you're going to make sure that poll comes out in a certain way. So, you know, to say this research and this, in this research, well, that's great. But what about the research on this other side that shows it's not wrong, not bad? So you can talk about all the research that supports your side, but the other research you disavow because it doesn't give you the answer you want it to. So there's all kinds of research out there. Which research do you look at? You look at this created research or this created research?
Well, at the end of the day, it's an issue of personal responsibility. And as long as I'm sitting here, my vote won't be to install an express lane for, for marijuana.
That's different from a ban. I mean, we might not have to ban it.
Well, I think in this- We can ban it now and what's to say in five years? If, if the research comes back and says, you know, it makes you perfect and there's nothing wrong with it and, you know, whatever, there's nothing to stop the board at that time to say, you know what, let's zone it. We'll put them everywhere. You know, we'll be the one-stop shop.
Already researched for the health benefits. I mean, it's out there and now you're saying that they, they're saying that that doesn't exist anymore.
The one thing that I will say is the health benefits are different. You know, if you go to your doctor and your doctor says, yes, you can utilize this, this isn't the same thing. This is not for medical use. This is for recreational use.
Right.
So I don't want to see, as long as I'm sitting here, my vote will not be to allow recreational use of marijuana in Chatham.
The other thing, the question I have, this is why we want to see a task force. This is because can we regulate what the dispensary sells? Like, can we be, you know, as a bar, say, we can, some have beer and wine and some have a full liquor license. Is that a possibility with a dispensary? Can we regulate what they're selling?
No, it's, the license, again, is through the state. So it currently, the president Kimsey is the liquor commissioner for, as trustee Mann talked about, you know, allowing these liquor licenses, president Kimsey serves as the liquor commissioner for the village of Chatham. When it comes to these marijuana dispensaries, that the state legislation organized it so that these applicants that apply for a marijuana dispensary license are doing it through the state. So it's going to be under the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation. So they're getting that license through the state. So then, once you zone it, there's, there's no putting the genie back in the bottle. Because once you zone and say, we're okay with it, they can then, and, and you then zone it, say, it can be in these areas of town. They, they make their application to the state. They get approved. They're in. You don't, we do not have any say on approving a, like we do a liquor license.
But there is truth to the, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
So I'm just saying that we do not have the same level of control over a recreational marijuana dispensary like we do a liquor license.
I think the proposal with respect to that control was just controlling the number of licenses that are issued in Chatham. So it speaks to your point, but, but there, I think the folks that want to zone it are saying, look, we'll, we'll create this special zone, and, and I'm probably oversimplifying it, but it'll be special, the weed zone. And then there are zero licenses allowed at this time in Chatham for that type of zoning. So every time anybody wants to apply, they would go forth in front of the planning commission and say, here I am, I'm a reputable businessman and I want to open this thing and I wish to put it behind a scoop du jour or whatever. And, and then that planning commission would interview them, study things and then decide, oh, yeah, this guy, it seems like reasonable plan. And then the planning commission would then push it to the village with a proposal to say, yes, we like him, no, we don't. And then at that point, the village board would ultimately grant the license or, or grant the zoning or, or not. I think that's what they're seeking.
Well, but to that point, you know, while, while the village of Chatham is growing leaps and bounds and fast, we all know this. Geographically, we're not that big. So is there an area of town that we're, I mean, we're not that far from residential neighborhoods to business districts that any of us are going to be comfortable in hearing from the constituents in that area like, ooh, we're the lucky winners. It's going by in our area. So the residents of Fox Creek are, you know, to your example, get to be the lottery winners that it's going to go by them. I mean, and because this is illegal federally, these are cash-only businesses. There is no, the cash can't even go in a bank. Bank, because if the, if the money goes in a bank, the feds can raid it and take the cash. So, so now you're setting up, and they see this in Colorado, while these facilities are highly regulated and very secure inside, everyone knows, I mean, the crime element, that where you're going to put this, crime rate's going to go up around it. So, you know, Fox Creek, you know, you get to deal with that, to that example. And they know this is, that's cash-only in there.
They can't deposit the money in a bank?
Mm-mm. No.
They can. They just run the risk of it being swiped.
Yep.
But there's other ways to keep it secure also. So, I mean, and to that point.
It's been taken by the feds, the money?
I don't have any specific examples I can give you, but I know that's the law. And the village attorney can-
Yeah, I'm not aware of any examples of it.
Yeah.
Well.
I know there are those issues.
You can't know that. These are all things, this is why I would just love to see a task force. I would love to see more information on this. I'm not ready for a ban. I think that it's, we are emotional right now and this is a big change in our lives. And I think that we need to be a little more careful and explore it just a little bit farther.
And I think that, I think that's really why you're proposing this, right? And you may have certain opinions, but one of the positions that you had, at least when you and I spoke, was that, you know, we, we don't know what's going to happen. This could be good. This could be bad. Why not let that guy try it and see what happens? And I don't mean to speak for you, but, you know, let's let, let's let Verdon see how that, yeah, it works out with them or whatever. You know, I'm just picking it up, but it's, but again, let them, let them try. We'll, we'll go second place or fourth place or whatever and, and we'll decide. I think that's part of, you know, we all sort of share that concern. Nobody knows the revenue. Nobody knows the crime. Nobody knows anything.
Right.
But it's just, where do we find ourselves, you know, morally to give us sort of the, well, if you had to guess which door, you know, which one are you going to pick?
No, you didn't misquote me. I, I, that was one thought. I don't want us to be the guinea pigs. This is so new in the state of Illinois. I don't want us to be the guinea pigs. I think many in our community have said that we've been the guinea pigs with this water plant. I don't think we want to be, go through this kind of mistake again. I think this is going to be one of those issues. If we say now, we're okay with it and things go south, you know, we're going to look, people are going to look back at this moment and say, why did they allow us to go forward? Because there's no going back. Whereas if we do the ban now, and, and ban can be a negative sounding connotation, but it's saying, you know what, we're opting, I, here, opt out. We're not opt out. You know, we're to opt out of having this. And if, if Verdon's raining money and, and, you know, they've, they've now put in a dispensary and there's no drug problem on the black market side, we'll jump, jump on board. I'm sure everyone in this community will say, let's do it too. But, you know, let the other communities find that out and we can jump on board at that point. Right now, we're not seeing that.
But instead, let our fear close the door on it, ban it completely.
Well, I, I don't think that's fair to say.
Oh, it is fair because you said ban it and because you don't know the answers, which is fear, that's what you're wanting to do.
Well, as I said-
You proposed to ban, to ban it.
Well, as I said in my prepared statement, I was looking at all the physicians in the state medical society, our law enforcement agencies. I don't, they're not basing this on fear. They're basing this on their professional backgrounds and credibility. I'm not putting my- I want to say, I'm not saying I'm an expert on this in any way, but I'm going to the experts and that's what they're saying.
You're placing out their research.
Well, you know, okay. I don't, I don't have an M.D. I don't have a law enforcement training.
I need to see these because I have not seen that, what you're saying. I have seen both, I've seen extreme polls on both sides. And then I, I don't like extremes. I don't, there, there's always something wrong with extremes. They, they have an agenda. The middle tells the truth and I want to see more of that. And I, that's what I have in my head. And I don't have the, the stats off the top of my head, but I have seen a trend over years and years and years. Because this has been debated forever, like alcohol. And it has been held up against drugs. It's been held up against other drugs and alcohol. And it is a drug. Alcohol's a drug. We have bars. We have alcoholics, you know, and we have illegal drug problems. But I, I, everything I have read points to this is not that harmful. In fact, this is equivalent and probably less harmful than alcohol, is everything I've read. And then there are the, then there are the health benefits that don't necessarily apply to how they're extracting it and treating people medically. But, and I just don't feel as extreme about it because of everything I have read over the course of years. And it is research and it's, it's, I don't, I don't know what you're, I, I'll go find it. I'll, I'll go and find that research.
I struggle to see how letting somebody else figure it out is extreme.
No, I mean, a total and complete ban. I don't like operating off of fear.
You can call it whatever you want to, but what we're doing is we're saying, not right now. If another board, when I'm done in, in two years or whenever my term is up in eight years, however long I sit here, and another board wants to say, yeah, they've got it figured out and they want to do it, let that be their decision. But what we can't allow and what I won't allow is to let the genie out of the bottle here and not be able to put it back.
I understand that point. I, I do think the communities, the surrounding communities in our little nucleus here in this portion of Illinois, they are more for this. I don't think we're going to see a lot of bans. I mean, I feel like everybody's working it. Isn't Springfield meeting tonight about this? So, you know, I, I think that we're going to see it anyway.
But just because somebody else does it, doesn't make it right for us.
Oh, I totally get it. I understand that. But I also see the benefits and I'm not all for, you know-
But just because we don't do it, it's not going to lower our crime. It's not going to have less marijuana in this community. Because if I drive to Springfield, buy marijuana, come back home, guess what? That marijuana is still in Chatham.
It's still going to be.
But you had to drive to Springfield to get it.
I'll still smoke it. I bought it in Springfield, not in Chatham. So Chatham didn't see the money.
You know, the other thing I would really like to hear from, I would love to hear from the police departments. I would love to hear from the legal system in general and how it's, what they think, what they feel about this.
Sure. The Illinois Sheriff's Association and Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police both opposed it.
Our, our Illinois chief-
The state, yes, the state. All the, the, the chief, the- The state, yes, the state, all the, the chief, the police chief can confirm, as well as the Illinois Sheriff's Association.
All right.
But I do know the General Assembly approved it, two different houses.
And they've done a great job over these years.
Two different houses, two different houses have approved it, which means there was medical reports, there was research.
Yeah, that's the thing.
There's all this and that.
Everyone, please.
To support it, folks, please.
We were doing really, really good.
No, I'm just asking.
You guys had good comments.
Exactly.
So we're good.
It's our time to talk.
General Assembly, I understand what you're saying, because it is, that is all encompassing, that they do all of their research, timely research, and all of the documents should be within that law.
I mean, yeah, is all their research wrong and bad? I mean, you know, just because they're against marijuana, or for marijuana, is it all bad? Just because the doctors are against it, does that mean their research is bad? It doesn't, because you must have had a combination of both to pass this legalization. So it didn't win with a ban or a non-ban, it worked together, so that research worked together.
Well, it sounds, I don't know how much further we want to go, but.
Matt, you're the chairman, and I know it's not on your side, but you have, you have to say the words that, to Jeff, to prepare an ordinance.
Will you prepare an ordinance for our next meeting, Jeff?
Yeah.
Or I approve, agree with it or not, will you prepare one?
I will do so, and just to be clear, the model, IML ordinance and the ordinance a lot of these communities are adopting, not only prohibits dispensaries, it prohibits all types of cannabis business establishments. And I assume that is, you know, what will be, you want included in this. So we'll also prohibit cultivation centers, you know, and future organizations, processing organizations. So this will be kind of the same, same type of prohibition that all of the other communities have brought forward. And I will prepare that and we'll bring that forward for the next meeting.
How long does that last? Does the ban, like, is this something that we just continues until we revisit it?
That's right, it'll basically be on the books until it's further amended by the village board.
Okay.
There's no real trick to that.
Okay.
Now, if we were to move forward with it, let's, let's just look at this idea for a minute. And we decided after, you know, the revenues aren't what we expected, the crime is so high that the police department can't handle it, can we, after we've already let the genie out, can we put it back in?
So if you decide in the future you want to allow this, yes, and, and the way.
But then I want to ban it after I allow it. Can you ban it after you've already allowed it?
Can you ban it after you've already allowed it?
So you're saying if a dispensary came in, can they then put a ban in?
Because, because of the crime rates, because of the, you can't ban future ones?
Well, not if they're already in.
Well, if they're here, they're here, but you, you don't have to allow others if you ban it afterwards.
The way, the way, if I understand your question correctly, the way municipalities can regulate these are through special uses. So there would be some sort of provisions put in your zoning code, you would, you know, assuming you're not going to allow it by right, you've got a special use. And so typically with a special use, that use is going to continue until, you know, that business is no longer operational, so.
We control those special use permits, correct?
Once you allow that, it's, it's, that business is going to be able to stay in there.
But we allow, we issue those special use permits.
Yes, the village would be the ones responsible for issuing the special use permits.
So we'd vote against those special use permits each time they came before us.
If the board so desired, yes.
Now, Jeff, you mentioned all the other things to add in that from the IML language. Do we need to also include something against the public consumption or smoking within this?
So the law already prohibits the public use of it. Public use is defined as basically within your, you know, within your view. So, but it also includes any, you know, public facilities, that type of thing, would include sidewalks, parks, those types of things. Also is prohibited anywhere that the Smoke Illinois Act prohibits smoking. So I, you know, that's something we'll look at to see if we need to beef up the draft ordinance with. I know that's also something that trustee Gerger has inquired about, but the act already prohibits public use of smoke or use of cannabis.
I spoke with the American Log Association, I know there's concerns, because I believe this legislation is like 600 pages long, and.
Yeah, it's double page right there.
That's the whole thing?
Yeah.
And I believe there's some concerns that there's contradictory language regarding to the Smoke Illinois Act that they may have to bring up during the veto session here in a couple of weeks. So there's probably further things they're going to have to clear up, that I don't know if we, just to be proactive, if we need to.
Yeah, and I, I think quite honestly, the, that's probably a larger issue for those communities that are allowing the dispensaries, because that's really where you're potentially going to, you know, have the ability to use cannabis on-site. So, and again, that one could potentially be regulated by the special uses. But if, if you're going to prohibit any type of cannabis business establishment, you're really going to be unlikely to have anywhere within the community that you're going to be able to use cannabis publicly, so, but that's something we'll take a little closer look at.
Any other discussion? So you'll prepare that for our next meeting. Village manager update?
Got two items. October the 5th, the Chatham Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring the village cleanup, where they go up and down Route 4, Walnut Street, some of the bigger streets, clean up the area, bike path, pick up paper, cans, bottles, and stuff. They're always looking for people to help, starts at nine o'clock, and it ends at noon, and you can meet them on the square. Please, please, for those of you in attendance who have never done that before, please do. Talk about being proud of our town, this is one way to show that. You just get your hands dirty for a few minutes on October 5th, you'll feel good about yourself at the end.
One thing, trustee Detmers, I know he has a lot to do with organizing that, so.
I love trash.
Yeah. He always finds interesting things, too, I think it's become a competition.
I found a dollar last year, if that will help you, incentivize you. The other thing is, October the 19th is the village-wide cleanup, where we allow people to bring their items from home down to the community park and drop things off. In the past, we've done that two weeks in a row. Now we are doing it for just one week in the fall, and then we're going to do it one week in the spring. So it's October the 19th, you can start at seven o'clock in the morning, and it runs to noon. You can see all the details on the village webpage. So if you have stuff, if you're going to come, please make sure you have an ID, show that you live in the village limits, because if you don't, we won't let you dump your stuff there. Okay? That's it for me.
Any questions for Pat? Next is the utility oversight committee discussion. Were you here last night, Chairman Gerger?
Brett texted me and said he had to get off, and he was hoping that either Ryan or Paul, or, yeah, could fill you guys in on what was discussed.
Yeah, so we do have a citizen that has stepped forward and is willing to, he's here in the audience, is willing to fulfill, fill the open seat. So I would like to ask that we amend the ordinance to add, to add him to the utility oversight committee for, and have that prepared for our next meeting.
And I'll get all that information to Jeff.
Is, is, okay, we don't need to make a motion and approve all that?
And he's here tonight, so thank you.
Yeah.
Two nights in a row.
Welcome.
And then the second topic that came up was the chloramine conversion. And what I would like for us to do is have a quick discussion. SSWC is still not providing any information, right? So now we're going on well over a year, a year and so many months. We don't know why, but they're not there yet. So I think what the committee would like, the subcommittee would like, for some information on some form of ramifications legally. You know, again, I know we've sent four or five letters on this now at this point, but there's got to be something that we can do to hold them accountable for their non-action.
Is this still about the training from the Texas company that has not provided training to the water commission for this?
And every time we call, it's a different excuse now, so. So I'm as frustrated as yous are. I believe that the, the issue is that the SCADA system is programmed for the old types of filtering, and the SCADA application itself has to be rewritten to adjust the ratios and flow rates and those types of things for this new type of filter. And, you know, when asking the gentleman, you know, when's that going to be, his answer was simply that, you know, it's expensive, because these guys have to travel down from Chicago, so we typically queue up a number of different changes that we want them to make while they're here, to make it more cost-effective. And, and so my understanding is that they're building that queue of work to bring this firm down. So I, I don't want to speak for them, but I think that's the answer.
So let me just say, Dewey, I appreciate what you just said, and this is not a reflection of you, but we've heard that before.
Sure.
The SCADA has been their scapegoat at least twice before.
Exactly.
So I, bottom line is, we need something, yeah, we need something from them, some sort of a, a commitment that it will be done by X. If, I can tell you in my professional career, if, if I've had a project that has gone on for, I believe it's two years now that we've, that since we approved the money, the raise in our rates, to give them the money to buy what they needed to buy and do what they needed to do. If we had spent money in my professional career, I would have a different job by now. And it, it's just, it, it's just not acceptable.
And would you have spent this much money with them? And you're the majority customer of this company, of this district. The way we've been treated by them on this issue, just being told soon, and soon, and soon, and soon, is not, is not right. And we've been eating the word soon long enough, which soon has been now over a year, as was stated. So if, if the answer Dewey had, which I'm not saying it's not, but if that's the answer, that's the answer that should have been provided a year and however long ago, not soon. Because then we would have been like, okay, that makes sense, but what do we have to tell people across town, well, it's going to be done soon?
Creating the choir.
We don't have more information, that's the problem.
Yep. So that's the, that's the utility commission update.
The NEA Transition Plan Committee update, trustee ban.
Yeah, so we, we met, we reviewed several documents, we approved the several documents. We've got some more work to do next week, a week from today, more approvals and more reading through documentation. So we are on track again, so.
That's great.
I'm glad you didn't use the word soon. Public property and recreation committee discussion, trustee Detmers.
We did, we met last night, six o'clock, thank you for those that attended. We have Kite Up the Park in Pausa Palooza coming up, so look to Facebook for those events, it should be pretty cool. Thanks, so Pausa Palooza is the first time ever raising funds for a potential future dog park. We discussed some improvements made at J.C. Parks, so thank you to the village parks department for your efforts there in making our parks, parks look better. We did touch on the comprehensive public property study by Massey and Massey. Again, we saw a presentation by that firm, appreciate their efforts. Again, for those of you that don't know, we're having a comprehensive plan for the village to discuss all things village, but that really didn't focus too much on our public properties. So we had a secondary study from Massey and Massey that really focused on our parks. What, what type of shape are they in today, what could we do in the short, medium, and long term to advance our parks, to satisfy the needs of our residents? So that presentation was given again last night. Some input provided from our veterans with respect to the Veterans Memorial, and hopefully that's incorporated into the plan. And then lastly, we discussed some recreation program that the village hosts. I think in total, we had about 285 participants in the summer recreation program, 135 different addresses. So it's a program that's in place, perhaps we can make some changes to make it more effective. But that, that was discussed and will be again discussed on our next meeting, November 11th.
One thing, trustee Detmers, that I will add to that, is, is in the plan for the parks development, there is a lot around water retention and retention ponds in those parks, which is good to hear, to alleviate some of the issues. Not in all areas, but, but I think would go a long way to alleviate a lot of the issues.
Yeah, and each, in each different quadrant or each public property, you know, I think water was addressed by Massey and Massey, and I do appreciate that, one of which was a potential sort of retention pond, recreational pond, just south of town near the electric building, but it, it would be used for trying to capture the water that flows from the fields that are on the west side of town, southwest side of town, that flow towards Community Park and ultimately through those neighborhoods and community parks. So anyway, some of these plans are, are very expensive likely, and a bit high hopes, but some of them may, may get executed pretty quickly.
So I appreciated that presentation last night, being able to hear all that information. And so is the next step, and you may have said this, to formally bring that plan to the board?
Yeah.
Is there a timeline we're hoping to, or?
No, I, you know, I think that the firm is just as excited to have it finished as, as we are. So I can see it happening in the next few months, probably. I had, I didn't talk to Ken directly with, with the timing, but I think he's going to try to incorporate some of the things discussed last night, and then present it to, to you board, and you guys can see if you like it.
And then, and then at that point, it'd be somewhere, you know, Peck and Dustin can work, and they'd look and see, like, even, if we, if this is done before budget planning for next fiscal year, like, what little bit can it start moving forward?
Yeah, we'd use the, we'd use the plan for our budgeting, so, you know, what, do we need a street sweeper, or would we rather have a swing set? And then on top of that, we can use a comprehensive plan for grants and other types of funding that, you know, they may not entertain somebody if they're not too serious or don't have a plan. So this plan will show people we're serious, and maybe they'll dump, dump money towards us.
Okay, public comments on any village business?
That's if anyone.
Anybody can speak, or?
If anyone would like to speak out there.
Agenda topics or non-agenda topics?
Anything village-related?
I have a question, so you have the vote of four to two, and he's going to write it, what happens after that?
It'll be brought to our next meeting, and then we'll take a vote on that ban, based on what he writes up, banning marijuana dispensaries in Chatham.
So it could still not get banned, depending on the next vote?
Correct.
It could still, you're correct.
We didn't vote on it yet.
Yeah, that was just to advance it to the next board meeting for final action.
To have the ordinance written up.
So this meeting that we're in, the meeting that we're in today is called the Committee of the Whole, it meets once a month. The regular village board meeting occurs twice a month, and the next meeting is September 24th here at 6:00 P.M. And it's, on September 24th at 6:00, we would be discussing the proposed ordinance that was discussed today. So then we would say, oh, yeah, let's talk about it again, and you guys can, please come and share your opinions, and then we'll vote on whether or not to opt in or opt out. And we'll have it on board docs, that ordinance, a few days before Tuesday. We try to get them up there by Friday, before the Tuesday meeting.
I didn't get a chance to say anything, and I apologize. I, you talked a little bit about Denver, I just wanted to say, my brother, who is pretty liberal-leaning, has lived out there for many years, and he, once they incorporated the allowing it in Denver, he lives in a little village right outside in Greenwood Village, they, and he led the charge to ban it there. So, which actually kind of surprised me, but he's also been a English, high school English teacher for about 25 years, so he's seen the effects, he's seen the effects in Denver, and he echoed, and he's lived there for 25 years, that it is not the place it used to be, more crime, not as safe, he's got young children, he was concerned. And so while he might be a liberal-leaning person, he has seen the effects on his students, he has seen the effects over the years as a teacher, and he said, you know what, not in my neighborhood. So I just wanted to put that out there, I appreciate all your thoughtful comments, and I'll be back in September.
It is.
Thank you. No further discussion, I think?
Matt, the only thing I wanted to say was, I thought tonight was a very good night. The public spoke passionately, they followed the rules, the board spoke passionately on what they thought, back and forth, they allowed people to speak. You guys did fantastic tonight.
Yeah, no.
You did, so did yous. So you don't win them all.
It was a good discussion.
It was a good discussion.
It was, yeah, I was very proud of us, I think. It was, yeah, I was very proud of us, I think we all did a good job in this room.
They did, they really did.
Thank you for all for spending your Tuesday night with us.
Yes. Now you see how to argue civilized.
It's usually a lot quieter and more boring.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those are, Joe? All those are favored?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Ayes aye.
Thank you for coming.
So no need for a closed session?
No.
Not very good. Very good.
Well, and, you know, this is something, yeah, you too, I understand what you're saying.
And we see how well that works.
I recommend I come to the next...
This is your brain, this is your brain now.